Happy Tuesday, everybody, and welcome into Uncle Tom Talks. Uncle Tom Talks begins on a somewhat solemn note today. I want to play my quick respects and condolences. We learned yesterday of the passing of Coach Ralph Lindeman. Coach Lindeman has been the head track and field coach at the United States Air Force Academy for the past something like thirty-two, thirty-three years. Just a legend, literally a legend in the track and field. In those circles in this country, he's extremely well-known. You don't keep a job like that for thirty-plus years unless you're doing pretty well. And the Air Force Academy has, I don't know how many titles and banners and all that stuff that Air Force has won under his tutelage, but it's quite a few. Coach Lindeman was instrumental in recruiting our son. So many of you know that our oldest son attended the Air Force Academy. He graduated in two thousand and eighteen, and he was a runner. He's a distance runner, so across country in the fall, track and field in the spring. And I got to meet and spend some time with Coach Lindeman. I bump into him all the time. We just live a stone's throw from the Air Force Academy. That's where our house is. So we're up there all the time, supporting athletics, going to meets, watching our son run. And Coach Lindeman told me on many occasions, kind of pulled me off to the side, said, hey, I support you. I'm a believer in everything that you talk about, talking about political conservatism. So he said, I've got to be careful. I can't say a lot and speak out loud because he's an employee of the Department of Defense, which is kind of a shame how those people have to self-muzzle themselves. We know on a number of occasions, I agree with you. But Coach Lindeman had colon cancer. We just found out and died apparently on the operating table yesterday when they were, they're operating on his cancer and things went south. I don't know the details, but rest in peace, Coach. You will be missed, and the Air Force track, field, and cross-country community is certainly grieving for your loss. Now, so we're in honor of Coach Lindeman. It's not unusual for me to wear Air Force stuff anyway, but in honor of the head track and field coach Lindeman, that's why I'm wearing this shirt today. On Thursday, we got, you got an abbreviated version of the Uncle Tom Talk Show on Thursday because I had to cut it short to get out of here, to get to my local school board meeting. Our local school board meets every other Thursday night, and I wanted to be there. So I told you about that meeting. If you want to watch that show, go back and find it in the archives. I told you, maybe I'll bring you an update on Tuesday, which is what I'm going to do today. I'm going to tell you what happened, or part of what happened at our local school board meeting Thursday of last week. So I live in Colorado Springs School District Number Twenty. All our kids have attended District Twenty schools. One of them still does. And our district is, we live in a conservative district. It's, they're getting harder and harder to find in the United States, but this is basically a conservative district. Our local representative, his name is Doug Lamborn, our representative to the United States House, he carried our district with something like twenty-two-plus percent. Donald Trump carried our district with something like sixteen-plus percent. So the fact, so the fact that we have a conservative school board in a conservative district should really come as a surprise to nobody. We had our school board election last November, and the three candidates who won that election all ran on conservative platforms. They let us know what they believe, and basically what they believe is parental involvement, parental control, that they are elected representatives of the parents, which they are. And what the parents of this district by and large believe is that, look, it's not your responsibility, public school district, to talk to my kids about LBGQ, everything else. That's not your job. That's my job. It's not the responsibility of the school to force critical race theory into our children's minds, and if they are going to do that, then we want to know what's being taught. We want to have our hands on and be involved in that process so we're aware what's being taught to our children. That's what the three members ran on, and they won in a landslide. I mean, they won huge, excuse me, myself. They won huge. So the voters of this district stood up and said, that's the sort of school board we want. Well, the leftists in our district, of course, are infuriated. These people tend to be infuriated, it seems like, a lot of the time, but they showed up on Tuesday and delivered their speeches berating our school board in a manner that it's really disappointing. And I'm going to show you, you're going to get to hear exactly what I'm talking about because I've clipped a couple of their speeches. So I mentioned on Thursday, and I mention this often, and I'm going to continue to mention this often. School board, I would argue, school board directors, school board members, is the most important elected representative office in the United States of America, hands down. The most important, hands down. However, it's also the single position for which people in this country are the most ignorant. You're not stupid, you're ignorant. Most people, I would argue, in this country, most people have no idea. They can't name one member of their school board. They don't know how many members their school board has. Is there five? Is there three? Is there seven? Is there ten? They don't know. Don't know where it meets, don't know when it meets, don't really know what the school board actually does. We ceded this ground to the left seventy, sixty years ago. The left got involved, got active, took over our school boards, and now they own the entire educational establishment in this country because we didn't have our eye on that ball. And if you're ignorant and you don't know, if you can't answer the questions that I just asked, how many school board members do you have? Name two of them. Where do they meet? When do they meet? What are their responsibilities? If you don't know the answer to those questions, then you understand how we lost the portion of the premise, right? You understand that's how the public education system, especially our university system, is now run almost entirely by leftists. Ninety-two percent of American universities are run by nobody but leftists. Put it this way, if you're applying for a teaching position at Michigan, University of Michigan, at Florida State, at Colorado, at basically any university in the country, if you're applying for a position and you have put on social media that you support Donald Trump, that you believe he did a good job as president and that his policies were effective, I can tell you what your chances of getting that job are. Slim and none, and Slim has left the building because these people are extraordinarily intolerant. They call themselves tolerant, kind, inclusive. They, that's what they believe about themselves. But the truth is, they're just the opposite. They are entirely intolerant of any and all views that don't agree with their own. So here in my hometown, in my home school district, we elected board members who, for the most part, do not agree with all of the positions of the leftists in the country. That's the district we live in. That's our voters. That's our demographic. And you know what? Our schools have been pretty good. Our schools in District Twenty are pretty doggone good. They're doing a very good job, but if you've never been to a school board meeting, you've seen these things on the internet here the last year or so. Most school board meetings begin with public comments, right? So it's an open microphone forum. Anybody can sign up, step to the microphone, and address sort of their concerns, usually for two or three minutes, and then they get cut off or the mic gets turned off or whatever. Can't let people stand there and give these fifteen-minute-long speeches because sometimes you have fifty people who want to speak. So you get two or three minutes to address the school board. I don't know if this is the way it is in all school districts, but in our school district, the board doesn't respond. So they literally, all they do is they just, they just have to sit there and take it, good, bad, and ugly. They just sit there and get beat up on by people standing at the microphone, berating them, calling them names, getting as nasty as they want to be, and the school board member can't do anything besides just sit there. It's really, it's really pathetic. It's kind of like Barack Obama, how he used to treat the Supreme Court justices during his State of the Union addresses. Remember when he, remember when he did this a couple of times? Sit there and beat up on the Supreme Court justices, sitting right there in the front row, and they can't do anything. They could just sit there and take it. Well, the school board's the same way. So Thursday night, some people stepped up to the microphone and addressed our school board, and I'm going to play you these clips, and then we're going to talk about them. This is how they treat elected representatives. Now, mind you, our local school board election was in November. That was just four months ago. The representatives on our school board, I mean, they, they've only been there for a hot minute. They really haven't voted on anything yet. I mean, it's only been four months, four months since the election. They didn't start being school board members until even after that. So they really haven't had a chance to do very much. The board only meets every other week. So typically twice a month in most months, every now and then, that'll be three times in a month, but every other week. So they really haven't done much, not through fault of theirs, just because of a matter of fact of the calendar. And this is how they got treated Thursday night. I've selected two clips from Thursday night's school board meeting. I'm going to play you the first one. Get cut number one ready, heavyweight champion. Oh, by the way, this show was produced. Jeez, I can't believe I forgot this. If it weren't for the heavyweight champion of the world, two times, the two-time heavyweight champion of the world, I would be talking to nobody because he sits there, pulls the levers, and pushes the buttons to make this all happen, and his name is Apollo Creed. The Dancing Destroyer. So get cut number one ready, Creed. So I'm going to play you in its entirety, beginning to end, one of the two from Thursday, I just decided to sample, and I'll play it first so you can hear it uninterrupted. You can get it beginning to end. The first one's fairly short. I think this lady only spoke for around a minute and a half, two minutes. And all our school board members could do is sit there and take it. Now, as you listen to these clips, think about two things. Number one, said about childhood education. Okay, what are these people actually saying about the process and action of teaching children? Number two, and this is more in the second clip than the first, but a lot of people make the mistake of believing that critical race theory, teaching history and teaching critical race theory is the same thing. It's not. It's not. So they get up there and talk about, you don't want to teach history because you're a white supremacist and have white supremacy in your family's past, so you don't want history taught. That's what they think. History is matters of fact. History is provable, is fact. It's not called critical race facts. It's called critical race theory for a reason. We're not talking about teaching theoretical history. There's this thing, this theoretical history. History is, is matter of fact, but they insist on believing, you, you racist white Republicans or conservatives, you just don't want history taught. I think they're talking about CRT. So there's no video, well, there is video to go with this, but not of the speaker, which is probably good. I don't have this person's permission to put their image on the internet, and I could do that, but I don't want to. So all you'll get is the sign language, the American Sign Language interpreter, and the audio. This is how, I think this was, this was a speaker fairly early in the night. There were thirty-five of us that signed up to speak Thursday night. I was number, I was like number twenty-eight or twenty-nine. This person was before me. Get a load, this is how they address our publicly-elected school board members. These people are volunteers. These are not paid positions, just elected and seated four months ago. Cut number one.
Hello, I'm reading this statement for a parent that cannot be here tonight. "I am unable to be here tonight due to work as an active-duty service member and working on ensuring our NATO allies in Eastern Europe. I want my friend to read these comments and remind this elected school board that attempting to ban books and preaching anti-DEI rhetoric is a right-wing fanatical approach to ignoring our history and past errors. You are on a public school board and should be nonpartisan to serve all families in this district. You must address real issues to teach retention and morale. You need to ensure a positive and inclusive learning environment for all students. Excluding children that don't fit your box of extreme ideologies needs to stop. You can say the quiet parts out loud. You don't want real history taught because perhaps your children would read their family's racist past that maybe hasn't changed much even today. You don't want to respect and include the LGBTQ+ community because your worst fear is admitting that you may have a gay or trans loved one that you refuse to accept. That's a you problem that should never enter school board discussions. The law has outlined that all people and children deserve to have their civil liberties respected. As an active-duty service member, that's what I fight for. If anyone, especially those in marginalized communities, feel threatened, attacked, or hated, please know that we will stand with you and support your, support you. Your voices matter and deserve to be heard. Thank you."
And you heard the beginning of the outburst of the applause. So the way these meetings inevitably shake out, and this is really the saddest part of it all, is us versus them, parents versus teachers. So all the parents, we're all seated over on this side of the room. All the teachers and administrators, they're all on that side. And then they get up there and berate our board with a nasty gram like that, and the teachers all stand up and applaud and give a standing ovation. Well, what does that tell you? So we, the parents, are showing up and wanting to be involved and engaged to the best of our ability in our school district, in seeing how our money is being spent, and in knowing how our children are being instructed. And they, the teachers, are over on the other side saying, that's not what we want. They're more concerned with their agenda for our children than they are concerned with what we want for our children. Now, it was just plain nasty, justy. So heavyweight champion, get ready. You're going to have to be quick on the trigger because I want to go through this again and dissect it just a little. So get cut number one ready to go. Let me make sure I've, okay. So by the way, this was an individual, yeah, she was reading on behalf of another person unable to be there because that person is an active-duty service member. God bless him. I think I know who this is, and I hope, hope and pray that he returns safely and, and has no issues if he's deployed. I don't certainly want to see any harm come to these people. I don't hate these people. They're just, they're just, I could never do that. I could never get up in front of any kind of a board, whether I agree with them or not, and accuse them with this kind of hateful rhetoric. It's just, it's just not in me. Okay, let's roll cut number one and heavyweight champ, be quick on the draw. Here we go.
Hello, I'm reading this statement for a parent that cannot be here tonight. "I am unable to be here tonight due to work as an active-duty service member and working on ensuring our NATO allies in Eastern Europe. I want my friend to read these comments and remind this elected school board that attempting to ban books and preaching anti-DEI rhetoric is a right-wing fanatical approach to ignoring our history and past errors. You are on a public school board."
Remind this elected school board that attempting to ban books and preaching anti-DEI rhetoric is a right-wing fanatical approach to ignoring our history and past errors. Notice they never talk about what books or anyone's attempting to ban. The next speaker does the same thing. You just want to ban books, but they never mention, you know, there's no specifics. There never is any specifics. Right-wing fanatical approach to ignoring our history and past errors. I don't know anybody, anybody, and I'm as right-wing as they come, and this includes me, who doesn't want history taught. Nobody doesn't want history taught. Nobody. They insist on hammering this talking point that you just don't want history taught. Yes, we do. Everybody, nobody's against teaching history, all of it, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And America has some ugly history. There's no question about that, and nobody denies that. But for these leftists, America doesn't have any good history. It's all bad. Okay, that's all they see. All they see is that we were once a slave nation, which we were. They don't see that we ended it, that, that hundreds of thousands of people gave their lives in a war to end slavery faster than in any other country in the history of the planet, kicked it out of here, said, we don't want that in this country. They, ignoring our past history and past errors. Nobody is trying to ignore America's past. Roll it.
And should be nonpartisan to serve all families in this district. You must address real issues to teach retention and morale. You need to ensure a positive and inclusive learning environment for all students. Excluding children that don't fit your box of extreme ideologies needs to stop. You can say the quiet parts out loud.
Stop!
You don't want real history taught.
You are on a public school board that should be nonpartisan to serve all families in this district. Agreed. You must address real issues to teach retention and morale. Agreed. See, there's all this finger pointing. Look, notice how many sentences begin with the word "you." You can tell a lot about people by this if you didn't know this trick. How many sentences do you, when you read a nasty gram from somebody on email or on Facebook or on whatever, note how many sentences begin with the word "y-o-u." So one, two, three, four, five, six. Of the six sentences that are in this current paragraph, four of them begin with "you." So it's finger pointing. You need to, you must, you. You need to address real issues to teach retention and morale. Agreed. What are these real issues? There is no mention. You need to ensure positive and inclusive learning environments for all students. Agreed. We should have that. Excluding children that don't fix your, fit your box of extreme ideologies needs to stop. I've been following our school board pretty closely since they were elected four months ago. I don't know what extreme ideologies this person's talking about. See, there's no specifics. Excluding children that don't fit extreme, your box of extreme ideology, stop. It never started. They aren't excluding many children. Our school board isn't saying, if you're gay, you don't belong in our schools, or you should be singled out. And then you can say the quiet parts out loud is some sort of code. It's some sort of a mantra they frequently repeat in our school board meetings. You can say the quiet parts out loud. That never gets explained. Now, listen to this last paragraph. Roll it.
Because perhaps your children would read their family's racist past that maybe hasn't changed much even today. You don't want to respect and include the LGBTQ+ community because your worst fear is admitting that you may have a gay or trans loved one that you refuse to accept. That's a you problem that should never enter school board discussion.
All right, you have to back it up some, Creed. I wanted to do the first two sentences independently. So you don't want real history taught. Again, everybody wants real history taught. You don't want real history taught because perhaps your children would view their family's racist past that maybe hasn't changed much even today. So this person just called our school board racists. Your family's racist past. First of all, how does this person know the past of the families on our school board? How does this person know that the ancestors of our current school board members weren't on the Union side of the war, if they were even in this country at the time of the war? Their families may have immigrated here in nineteen twenty-seven, when emancipation was in eighteen sixty-three. Perhaps your children would view their family's racist past that maybe hasn't changed much even today. That is the vilest, most nasty, and all our school board members can do is sit there and listen to it, just sit there and take it. That's all they can do. The next sentence, so Creed's getting this queued up, but I'll read it ahead of time because this is really, really bad. You, again, sentences beginning with "y-o-u." You don't want to respect and include the LGBTQ+ community because your worst fear is admitting that you may have a gay or trans loved one that you refuse to accept. What an awful thing to say. That's, so school board members, that's your worst fear. Your worst fear is admitting that you may have a gay or trans loved one that you refuse to accept. This is projection, right? This is somebody who is projecting onto the school board members what they believe, not what the school, not who the school board members are. That's a you problem that should never enter school board discussions. Well, guess what? It never did enter the school board discussion until you brought it up. Nobody on our school board has ever mentioned anything about any of this. They bring it up, blame the school board for saying it, and then condemn the school board for not saying what they're the ones that said. Okay, roll it, roll it, Creed.
Even today. You don't want to respect and include the LGBTQ+ community because your worst fear is admitting that you may have a gay or trans loved one that you refuse to accept. That's a you problem that should never enter school board discussions. The law has outlined that all people and children deserve to have their civil liberties respected. As an active-duty service member, that's what I fight for. If anyone, especially those in marginalized communities, feel threatened, attacked, or hated, please know that we will stand with you and support your, support you. Your voices matter and deserve to be heard. Thank you.
That's a you problem that should never enter school board discussions. The fact that you may have loved ones who are gay and you refuse to accept them. The law has outlined that all people and children deserve to have their civil liberties respected. Agreed. As an active-duty service member, that's what I fight for. Is that what active-duty service members fight for? The civil liberties, civil liberties of gay and trans? They swear an oath to uphold the Constitution. I guess you could interpret it that way. If anyone, especially those in marginalized communities, which by the way, I'm in a marginal, I'm a community they consider marginalized, I'm a black American. If anyone, and especially those in marginalized communities feel threatened, attacked, or hated, please know that we will stand with you and support you. Who is, your voices matter and deserve to be heard. Agreed. So it's all emotion, all emotion. There's, there's no facts presented here anywhere. It's just this board is made up of racists and bigots, which by the way, not all five of our board members are ideologically to the right. We've got one who is ideologically to the left. Her name is Heather, and I like her a lot. She's, she's very reasonable. She's a lefty, but she's not like this. She wouldn't do this. And then we have one who's kind of a moderate, who's kind of center-right-ish on most issues. So these people, you, you board members, don't want to admit your own family's racist past because you're still racist today. Your worst fear is having to admit that you have a gay family member that you don't accept, and we will fight for anybody who feels hated. But we don't know who "we" is. It's all emotion. There is no facts in there. There's no mention of what the board has actually said. There is no mention of what the board has actually done. There's no mention of any rules that they actually handed down. There's no statistics. There's no nothing. It's just pure emotion. And these people call themselves the kind, tolerant, and inclusive ones. Now, cut number two is even more entertaining. This is a person who got up and read a poem written by somebody else who, I guess, couldn't be there Thursday night also. Thursday was Dr. Seuss Day. So I got up Wednesday morning and went to a local grade school, Mitchell, Mitchell, yeah, Mitchell Grammar School. And I, and I got to read to several classes of kids, some Dr. Seuss on Friday. It was a great experience. So this person gets up and reads a Dr. Seuss-like poem that somebody else wrote, which is just awful, the way they treated our board. So I'm going to roll this. The first, the thing you need to know is one of our board members, his last name is Salt, S-A-L-T, Salt. So in this poem, the play on his name is used. So the person doesn't actually call him by name. He doesn't call him Mr. Salt, but it's evident that's who he's talking about, who she's talking about. The person reading this is a she. I believe the person who wrote it is a he. This is cut number two. Roll it.
Well, hello there, board. Today is your day to sit down and meet and to greet and to say.
Today is your day to sit down and meet and to greet and to say all the things that you will, all the things you believe, all the things that have given me reason to grieve. Take books, for example. I hear there's a plan, a plan that's been hatched, or perhaps it's in hand. A plan with demands from a salty old man to take books he finds ill and establish a ban. That man is a fool and fools make dumb rules. Books are great tools, keep them in all our schools. The next silly thing the silly board wants to voice is pretending that parents do not have a choice to enter the classrooms or talk to the teachers or voice their concerns, even be overreacher. The problem is not real. Shh, this board isn't either. So let's pause for a second and just all take a breather. Up next is a problem we'll see through and through. It's the way that you talk about LGBTQ. Your hate-filled rhetoric is hurtful, that's true. And all I can say is shame on each one of you. So be better humans from here on today because you're impacting lives with the words that you say. CRT is not taught, that's a dead fight, it's true, but let's chat about the past of the red, white, and blue. The history of our country is harsh, it is bad, it is full of division, power plays, it's quite sad. But that doesn't mean that we just shouldn't teach it. In fact, we should yell it and scream it and preach it. Cause if we stay silent, come on, we won't beat it. The truth is instead we'll be doomed to repeat it. And finally, dear board, let us lift up these teachers. They're one of a kind, almost mythical creatures. Committed to building up your kids and mine, they do it for love. They're not out here to shine. So instead of reducing their time left to plan, we should prop them all up, do whatever we can to support them and love them and make sure that they know that without them our kids won't continue to grow. Now in closing, dear board, so you can see clearer, pretend I am standing here holding up a mirror. Take a deep look inside it, a real nice long stare, and let's see what needs changed to show that you care.
And after that excoriation of our elected representatives, the teachers stand and give a standing ovation. Okay, so up again Creed. How was that? I mean. For a board member, I couldn't be a board member. If I were a board member, just forced, yeah, I was, I was sitting right there. And. Every word of it's, every word of it's, I, y- you can go to the Academy District 20's website and pull it off yourself. It, it's as real as can be.
I believe you. It's mind boggling that that's.
It's mind boggling and I spoke, I spoke that night too. Uh, I didn't do anything like that, but I addressed, so what they've been doing is threatening our board members with recalls. They're, we're going to recall you. They were just elected four months ago and basically this is the left stomping their feet and threatening to hold their breath until I die if I don't get my way. If you don't start voting the way I want you to, we're going to throw you out of office when we, the people of this district, just elected them. And, and we elected him in a huge kind of way. There were 10 people on the ballot in November for this, for three scoreboard, school board openings in District 20, there were 10 people. Two clearly openly professing pro CRT, pro everything else liberals. They got buried. The three that won, that are sitting on our scoreboard, to the school board today, the three of them garnered 50, more than 53% of all ballots cast, just three of them. So with 10 people, you'd assume everybody would get about a 10th. The three of them got over 53%. The voters of this district spoke loudly. And these people did, they, they, they didn't learn anything. So yeah, that was real. They just get up there and, and if I were the president of the school board, I would gavel that person. I would have my gavel and bang it, not even halfway through that speech and say, that's not appropriate. Sit down. So you heard it. I'll tell you what, rather than do the stop start thing with my producer, I'll just read that poem, that Dr. Seuss-ish poem. Quote, well, hello there, board. Today is your day to sit down and meet and to greet and to say all the things that you will, all the things you believe, all the things that have given me reason to grieve. So in other words, you people are, you've given me nothing but reason to grieve. You people are useless. You're, you're just, you're, you're useless. Take books, for example. I hear there's a plan, a plan that's been hatched, or perhaps it's in hand. A plan with demands from a salty old man to take books he finds ill and establish a ban. So the salty old man, that's Aaron Salt, a member of our school board, who is not old, by the way, Aaron's younger than I am. I don't know how old he is, but if I had to guess, I'd say Aaron's between 36 and 40, something like that. He's not an old man. A plan with demands from a salty old man to take books he finds ill and establish a ban. That man is a fool and fools make dumb rules. Books are great tools, keep them in all our schools. So she called him a fool and all he could do is just sit there. Just sit there and take it. That is so far over the line. These people, they, they stepped to the podium and literally call our school board members fools to their faces. They're 15 feet away. And all they can do is just sit there. Books are great tools, keep them in all our schools. I don't know anybody, and I don't mean, I mean, nobody who wants books removed from schools. No one, no one's in favor of that. Quote, the next silly thing the silly board wants to voice is pretending that parents do not have a choice. So now she calls the board silly. This silly board. Totally intolerable. To enter the classrooms or, parents don't have a choice to enter the class, to enter the classrooms or talk to the teachers or voice their concerns, even be reachers. It's not real. Shh, this board isn't either. So let's pause for a second and I'll take a breather. This problem isn't real, this board isn't either. Just disrespectful. And then let's pause for a second and I'll take a breather. You're the only one talking. Nobody else is, you're the one throwing this hate. The rest of us are just sitting there listening to you. Quote, up next is a problem we'll see through and through. It's the way that you talk about LGBTQ. Your hate-filled rhetoric is hurtful, that's true. All I can say is shame on each one of you. So be better humans from here on today because you're impacting lives with the words that you say. End quote. I don't know what hateful person's talking about. See, no, none of the board members have ever said anything hateful about LGBTQ. If so, they probably would be up off the board by now. They've never said anything hateful, but to the left, if you're not a leftist, everything you say about LBGTQP plus is hateful. Everything. So it's projecting. They believe that these people have said things they've never said because they're projecting it onto them. So be better humans from here on today. Cause you're impacting lives with the words that you say. So be better humans. You people, see, this is all you. It's all finger pointing. No facts, no statistics, no actual quotes. No quotes of what the board members have actually allegedly said. Just your hate-filled rhetoric. What hateful rhetoric? They don't have any. Quote CRT is not taught, that's a dead fight, it's true, but let's talk about the past of the red, white, and blue. So people, you hear this a lot. CRT isn't being taught in any school in America. What is your source for that statistic? What is your source for that fact? I asked somebody this on, on the air on a TV show. Recently, who said CRT is not being taught in any, or any of its components is not being taught in any school in America. I said, how do you know that? How do you know that there is not one school anywhere in any school district, anywhere in this country, from Bangor, Maine to San Diego, California, from Anchorage, Alaska to Honolulu, Hawaii? Not one school anywhere has ever taught any component of CRT. How do you know that? How do you know there's not one high school somewhere in inner city Philadelphia with a course focusing on CRT? What's your source for this information? Well, let's talk about the past of the red, white, and blue. The history of our country is harsh, it's bad, it's full of division, power plays, it's quite sad. That's what they believe. That's what they think about America. There it is, right there, that our history is nothing but bad and sad. Okay, forget that we're the ones who liberated millions of people around the country, around the world at the expense of our own blood. Never mind that we're the ones who invented penicillin, which has saved more lives than were lost in all the wars of the world combined. Never mind all the great things this country has done and continues to do. They don't see any of that. They don't believe any of that has happened. All they see when they look at the United States of America is a derelict, illegitimate, horrible country with a sad history that is just pathetic. That's what they believe. I mean, I'm not projecting this onto them. I just read it. That's what he said. The history of our country is harsh, it's bad, it's full of divisions, power plays, it's quite sad. That doesn't mean that we just shouldn't teach it. In fact, we should yell it and scream it and preach it. That's true. Cause if we stay silent, come on, we won't beat it. The truth is instead we'll be doomed to repeat it. They believe that slavery is coming back. Jim Crow is coming back. White supremacists are hiding behind every blade of grass. The fact that the majority of Americans in this country who vote twice, voted for a black man to be their president, doesn't mean a thing. That in that administration, the Barack Obama administration, we had two consecutive black attorneys general, doesn't mean a thing. In the previous administration, we had two consecutive black secretaries of state, doesn't mean a thing. We have black mayors from coast to coast. We have senators, House representative, black captains of industry. We'd have black millionaires. We now have black billionaires in this country. Doesn't mean a thing. Doesn't mean a thing. It's all sad. America's made no progress. We basically are still a slave nation. And finally, dear board, let us lift up these teachers. They're one of a kind, almost mythical creatures. Committed to building up your kids and mine, they do it for love. They're not out here to shine. Agreed. So instead of reducing their time left to plan, we should prop them all up, do whatever we can to support them and live and let them make sure that they know that without them our kids won't continue to grow. I have a typo here. To support them and let them, to support them and let, and to support them and let them and make sure that they know that without them our kids won't continue to grow. That's not true. That's not true. Teachers are important. We should support teachers, but the idea that children won't grow without them? There are millions of homeschooling families in this country. We were one of them for a while. I don't want to diminish the importance of, of teachers, very important, but the idea that children don't grow, productive members of society without teachers is simply, there was once a point in time in this country when everybody was homeschooled, especially blacks. Yeah, there were public schools for blacks. Now in closing, dear board, so you can see clearer, pretend I'm standing here holding up a mirror. Take a deep look inside, a real nice long stare, and let's see what needs changed to show that you care. Finger pointing 101. A mirror. So it's you. You need to look in this mirror and figure out how you need to change to show that you actually care about the children because you don't, because you don't agree with me on everything. That was Thursday night at our local school board meeting. That is what happens at your local school board meetings. You just don't know it because you're not there. Well, maybe you are, but if you're not, this is what's happening right in your backyard. This is why our schools are in the condition they're in today. Because we've had our eye off this ball for 60 years and people like this that I just read to you, they are the ones running the show and calling the shots. Assuming everyone but themselves is a backwards, bigoted, racist nincompoop who has no business being involved in any way in the education of our next generations. That's what they think. That's what they believe. I just read it to you. So I hope if you're watching Uncle Tom Talks tonight, listen, whether you have children in your local school district or not. Maybe you don't have kids, maybe you have never had them, or maybe you're just beyond those years. Your kids are grown and gone. That school district, those schools, those teachers are still being paid by you. That's your tax dollars. That's going to pay everything. The buildings, the janitors, the teachers, the dry erase boards, you bought it all. And you have every right in the world to show up, find out what's going on, demand accountability. And if you hear stuff like this being spouted at your school board members, then you know what? Sign up to speak yourself and do the same thing I do. Say this is unacceptable. And get some people fired. Get them fired. Uncle Tom Talks, uh, I took a long time to go through that tonight. I knew I would. I normally end Uncle Tom Talks with real fake headlines. We're going to not do real fake headlines tonight. I'm going to push it to Thursday night because I'm trying to shrink these shows down. I'm failing. But if I did Uncle, uh, if I did real fake headlines, we'd, we'd run closer to an hour. And, um. It's just too long. So, uh, thanks for tuning in Uncle Tom Talks. Text freedom, freedom to eight nine five one seven to get live updates to know when Uncle Tom Talks is coming at you. Find Uncle Tom Talks on conservativedayly.com, conservative-daily.com. We're on Rumble, we're on DLive, we're on Twitch, we're on Telegram. If you find this via Apple Podcast, wherever you find Uncle Tom Talks, give a thumbs up and write a positive review. That's the key is to get reviews and start rising in the rankings. Uh, so do all that stuff and come back Thursday. It's up to us. We are the somebody. I'm Derek Wilburn. See you Thursday night.
Thank you for joining Uncle Tom Talks with Derek Wilburn. We will see you this Thursday.